And we want to get started to be mindful of everyone's time. We are anticipating probably two hours this evening. And we will give more instructions on how we will handle it as we get going. But I would like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission Special Meeting for May 28th. And we are here to discuss and learn together on how everyone feels about the possibility of planning and zoning of Atchison County. I'd like to call the meeting to order and our county clerk will provide roll call.
Here.
Mr. Quinn, present.
Here.
Okay, thank you. We have Mr. Cormode, if everyone would stand for our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
As I come to lead you in prayer, I want to read two scriptures first, both from the Book of James. If any of you lacks wisdom, let him ask God, who gives generously to all without reproach, and it will be given to him. But the wisdom from above is first pure, then peaceable, gentle, open to reason, full of mercy, and good fruits, impartial and sincere. And a harvest of righteousness is sown in peace by those who make peace. Father, thank you for the opportunity that we have to govern ourselves and to manage the affairs of our community and our life. And thank you, Father, for the commissioners who make so many decisions on our behalf and care for us. I pray, Father, that now as we consider the topic tonight, that we will do it with all the wisdom you can give us. This could be a great big change for us. And we want to make sure that we understand what we're doing. And we pray, Father, that you will guide us and that we will understand well and that we will rejoice in the wisdom that you give us to go forward. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve this evening's agenda? Moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Pass is three to zero. Okay. So the first thing on the agenda is the Commissioner intro to zoning and planning. So I was asked to kind of set the stage this evening. And first of all, I just want to say thank you. Thank you all for giving up your time to come and speak with your elected officials. This is huge. This is what things should be about. You should have a voice and we want to hear it. And also, thank you to my fellow commissioners and the clerk, Mr. Henderson, everyone for coming this evening to host this event. So thank you all for coming. So just to set the stage a little bit with some back info. I have only been here four years. This is the first year of my second term. And there's a lot of questions that come up when you're a county commissioner, a lot of issues, a lot of topics that are new to many of us. So it is our job to listen to our constituents, to educate ourselves and to learn as much as we can about the topic. When it comes to planning and zoning, my first opportunity to learn a little bit about it with a question to the commission was February of 2022. I received an email from a Grasshopper Township constituent asking if the commissioners had been approached by any wind energy companies for use of our county roads. So we discussed it. No one had been contacted. And then we began learning, no one needs to contact anyone because there's no zoning, no rules. So that piqued my interest because growing up in the county and the rural setting, zoning is not a good word. Like, I know that, we all feel that, right? Nobody wants the government telling you what you can and can't do. So I vowed to myself, I need to learn what this looks like. I need to learn as much as I can from what's going on in our surrounding counties. Nima Hau County was currently going through some wind turbine, commercial wind projects. Brown County had a Blade Watch group in April and May of '22. I had my own District Three little town hall educational meeting that we just put together at Elizabeth's to learn some of the things, education on property rights, understanding the wind energy fears from some of the folks that have done the research, educated themselves. A gentleman from Fairview came in and gave a presentation. Brown County has a Blade Watch grassroots group. And we learned a ton from those folks. I was able to sit down with, I reached out to the Kansas Association of Planning and Zoning Committee. I had lunch with one of the past presidents there that had served for six years. He actually lived in the city of Atchison. And kind of expressed some of the concerns I was hearing from our constituents and our residents. Like, we don't want this, we're nervous, what can we do? The same concerns that Brown County was also learning about many years prior to 2022. There's an article in Hiawatha World that they were looking at, you know, gearing up to have these town halls and hear people as well. So with that, I was out talking to my constituents, trying to hear where they stood on it. They were talking, Leavenworth County zoned and they don't have any dumping. Our friends in Jefferson County seem to be okay with it. It doesn't seem to be a big deal. Like, this is some of the Association of Planning and Zoning. He specifically said to me that Atchison County does not need zoning. You can accomplish everything you need to by resolution. That is what I was told. So fast forward to April of this year. And you know, I believed that because we have resolutions in place right now to do certain things in the county, whether it's keep up on the nuisances. And all of these resolutions were passed prior to me being in office. So it just made sense. Why would we, why would we, we don't need to zone. These resolutions are in place, we're good, just keep going. Well, April of '25, a community of concerned citizens reached out again. With this time, it wasn't the wind energy concern. This time, it was about a quarry moving into their residential neighborhood. This quarry was going to place itself on a parcel of land with homes all the way around it. Landowners were worried, they are worried. They reached out and they asked, you know, what can you do to stop this? Some of the things that I heard was, it's going to disrupt the whole area. Hope something can be done to stop it. It's going to destroy our township and county roads. It's a negative environment and wildlife. Anything you can do to prevent it. The dust is going to hurt my family's medical asthma issues. It's going to lose the birds from my local quail farm. My children play outside, it's going to have a negative impact on that. It impacts homes, wildlife, livestock, life in general. The county should be held liable for damages. The tranquility of our country setting is dramatically going to change with the nature of, within the nature of our community. The noise is going to affect not only ourselves but our livestock. And they're just also stating they're strong advocates for personal property rights. But when things adversely affect the neighbors and community, they were concerned. So hearing that and learning that there was nothing that the commission can do without enacting a planning commission and looking at a comprehensive plan and starting that. That is when we realized, you know, you have three Board of County Commissioners that are looking at a topic that is huge, right? And that's why we invited everyone here this evening. Because we want to share this information that we get. We want you guys to know what we're seeing in the county, what we're hearing in the county. And we want to hear from you. Because a lot of times, it's hard to relate. It's easy to be like, I don't want this. But then also putting yourself in your neighbor's shoes, that when it's affecting you, you know, we want to hear, we want to hear from everyone. So another thing, it's kind of ironic, but I picked up my beef at Diamond C. And this was like three weeks ago, driving down 318th. And I passed an American Wind Energy pickup. Could have been just because, maybe someone in Atchison County works for him. But we, one of the things Brown County did was they got a map of all the parcels that are in the county and they pulled the leases. And we have done that as well. And there has been identified that there is a wind, a wind commercial lease that is mapped out. So it's not if, it's just when, right? And setting the tone for educating, that's what we want to do. We want to educate you on what we hear, what we see, and hear from you on how we should handle it. Because together is what we want to do. And Brown County Commission just enacted a zoning regulation for wind, commercial wind energy in February of this year. And they have been having their community learning, educating themselves for over four years. So just kind of wanted to set the tone of, why are we here? You know, what are you hearing? And then we're excited to hear from all of you. So I would just encourage everyone to be mindful as everyone speaks, to please listen and imagine if you were the one affected, received a phone call today of, and I totally understand, public speaking makes me cringe. But if you don't want to speak, they ask if there would be a way at the end of this that they could put their name and yes, I'm for it, no, I'm against it, or I'm unsure. So we did create that. So we'll put this up here. If you don't feel comfortable speaking, feel free to tell us how you feel on the topic of zoning. So with that in mind, we have, we're not going to time you. We're not going to tell you, you only get a minute and a half to speak. We're just going to ask each one of you to please come up. We had this, we had a public forum for the County Lake recently and it was wonderful. Everybody was mindful of each other and came up and shared their thoughts. And it was really good. So please, somebody lead us off.
Could you tell us first what the zoning would mean? What effect would it have?
So that's a really great question and I am not an expert on it. I can tell you what I know. If, if the county were to explore zoning, it would start by the Board of County Commission appointing a planning commission. It has been thrown out. That would look like possibly nine people, maybe one from each rural township and somebody at large to give a really great representation of rural constituents. They would be then the ones sitting at the table, working with, what does this look like? If we want to have businesses, do we want them to have, you know, be in a residential neighborhood? Or I don't know all the details that's, we're learning together on this. But the start would be appointing a group of citizens to serve as a planning commission to kind of dive in and then build from there. And we're just going to come up one at a time.
I'll start us off. Good evening, Commissioners and Atchison County residents. I'm Monica Byan from Cummings. First off, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak this evening and being so transparent with this decision. I'm here tonight as a property and small business owner in Atchison County. My husband and co-owner Mitch would like to be here as well, but he's currently working out of town. Together, we have invested heavily in this community through our land, businesses, and time. I'm actually here to urge you to drop this idea of countywide zoning. Not because we're against order or planning, but because zoning in this context brings more problems than solutions. I'm going to highlight the six main issues that our family sat around, we sat around as a family and discussed, what we see with zoning in this county. But it doesn't even begin to touch the many questions we have on what zoning would look like. Kind of like you mentioned, Casey, that word zoning just brings so many thoughts and it's so broad. So these were our kind of six thoughts. First, we believe that zoning brings a loss of property rights and the potential for overregulation. One of our biggest concerns is the overregulation on our property, losing control over our land. We've worked hard to build our businesses and we chose Atchison County specifically because of its lack of zoning. It's given us flexibility, freedom, and a sense of ownership over what we've built. The idea that we might not be able to build what we want on our own property or that we need permission from a zoning board to expand is not just frustrating, it's offensive. Second, we have issues with government overreach and inefficiency. Our experience dealing with government processes in Atchison County has been slow, expensive, and unnecessarily complicated. A basic property survey cost us $4,000. And even then, it took the county over two years to get the filing correct. In May of 2014, the county implemented floodplain regulations and we're still working with maps that are over 10 years old. If the county can't manage current responsibilities, how is it going to handle the administrative load of enforcing and updating zoning regulations? We're already dealing with antiquated maps and outdated property records. Before adding more regulations, perhaps we should fix the basic infrastructure we currently have, which consists of outdated websites, poorly managed processes, insufficient instructions, and lack of qualified personnel. Third, we already suffer from high taxes and low accountability. What would zoning add to this? We already pay above average taxes for the state of Kansas and without the amenities that other counties have. We see high tax bills and decision makers who sometimes seem out of touch with the realities of running a business, farm, or household in this county and frequently make decisions that bring up voter distrust. We don't think it's wise to add to this. Adding zoning only introduces more permit fees, red tape, and costly delays on top of the high taxes we already pay. Will those permit fees cover the cost of new zoning enforcement? Or will we, as taxpayers, be forced to pay even more? Administrative costs to implement zoning will be exponential. And where's that money going to come from? I'm fearful but also certain that the financial burden of zoning will fall upon already overtaxed citizens. Fourth, zoning will cause economic harm and negative business impact. Mitch and I have completed construction projects in both the city and the county. And we attest that zoning in the city has slowed projects, driven up construction costs, and created headaches for both homeowners and contractors. There are already enough restrictions in place in the county. Zoning will just make it worse. Fifth, zoning will bring confusing standards and a lack of clarity. We have numerous questions about what zoning would consist of in this county. Is there a clear definition of what counts as residential versus commercial use? Is a farmer who sells eggs operating a business? What about someone running a hair salon from their home? Small businesses out of houses are part of what makes rural counties strong and self-sustaining. Who will make these decisions and how will they be enforced? In a previous meeting, Roger Denton mentioned grandfathering in and nonconforming. What exactly does that mean? Who decides what remains nonconformed? If we can't expand or change the use of our property because it's not compliant under new zoning rules, then grandfathered may lead to discrimination or favoritism, but it's probably more likely just a hollow bureaucratic promise. Sixth, we continue to choose Atchison County for its freedom. Our daughter is an example of the future of Atchison County. She's in the process of buying land and chose to buy in Atchison County specifically because it was unzoned. I love her, sorry, makes me weepy. She passed up better land and more infrastructure in neighboring counties because she believed Atchison offered more freedom and opportunity. If you pass zoning now, you'll pull the rug out from people like her, people who choose this county for what it is, not for what a handful of people are pushing for. In closing, Mitch and I firmly, and our family, firmly believe that zoning is not what Atchison County needs. We know that it will bring higher costs, more complexity, and fewer rights for the people who live and work here. We should focus instead on improving the systems we already have, modernizing records and websites, streamlining processes, and making government more responsive, not more restrictive. We need less government. Let Atchison County residents continue to use their common sense to make decisions for their livelihood. Please listen to the people you represent and keep Atchison County unzoned. Thank you.
Thank you. I was told you can say ditto.
Well, I can see that there are some good things that zoning would do. I wouldn't want a quarry next door. I wouldn't want a feedlot to come in next door. It's not likely to happen where I live. I live in Bellevue, so we're pretty safe there. But I know there are rules and regulations in the city that would affect me, the number of animals you can have. I'm licensed by the state of Kansas as a shelter. And is somebody going to come in and tell me I can't have a large number of dogs and cats? And we also have horses and cows. But I think some of the problems that zoning would take care of could be done by a resolution. I don't see why you have to zone the whole county and add more restrictions when some of the things could be handled in a different way that wouldn't affect everybody negatively.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm not a public speaker and I can never follow Monica's, ditto. I'm Kim Botteroff. I live in the county. I just wanted to address, in 2004, we, as county residents, I don't know how many of them are here, had a chance, the city attempted to annex a lot of property within the county into the city limits. One of the biggest things we heard during that time was, we like our freedom. We're not zoned. We like that we can do on our property what we want to do. That was 20 years ago. We fought that. And I don't know how many of you remember, but we fought for about three years. And most, probably 80% of the properties did not get annexed. Therefore, here we come to this, being zoned, that takes us back to 2004, that most of us, if not majority of us, are, we want the freedom on our property. That's why we live in the county. I heard that so many times then, is that's why we live in the county, because we want this. So my feeling with zoning, don't get me wrong. I do feel like there's probably some things that could be zoned, some properties to be cleaned up or things like that, that zoning may impact. But my fear is if we start zoning now, even if it's just for wind turbines or just because of a rock quarry or something like that, we are opening Pandora's box. And something that in 10 years, when you guys are not on our commission, the zoning is there and their commissioners come forward and they're like, zoning's in place, so now we can do this, 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 and this. Therefore, I am against zoning.
Okay, so I'm not going in?
No, you're, you're
I'm still working here.
Yeah, you do.
Look at me, Jason.
Kansas doesn't have a generalized process for having initiatives. There are specific ones usually related to taxation that can be placed on a ballot, but there's not really a way to put a question like zoning on a ballot.
That means they can pass it without the people to tell you. Have you anything to say about it, what we're doing tonight?
No, I, I mean, part of the process, the process involves community involvement through a study done by the citizens of the county. Sure, yeah.
So I'd like to So I would like to speak to that because we do have, we did have a resolution that the County Commission could start this process. So that's when we were like, no, we want to hear from the citizens. To your point, I want to share another concern from my constituents is the fact that if you put something on the ballot with 16,000 people in our county able to vote for it. I don't know if we can just vote in the rural area. I know when I talked to the Brown County Commission, that was different. Of the layout of Brown County was roughly 50/50, if not more, farmers and rural residents than majority urban. Just to point that out, because that's been one of my constituents' concerns as far as putting it on the ballot, is if it's a countywide vote, I mean, the people in the, so. I just wanted to share that with you.
Within districts, precincts?
There is not a way to have a ballot initiative on zoning. And there's especially not a way to have it only, a ballot initiative only in the rural areas. There's not a way in Kansas. We have a representative here that would take a legislative change and you could talk to your legislator about it. But I wouldn't foresee that, that change being made by the legislature.
Can I reiterate what Katie said, Casey said to you? Like, we have a great showing here, this is amazing. But on the ballot, it would be the city voting and that's the majority of our voters. So I think putting it on a ballot is a real risky move. Because they're already zoned and of course, they're going to think, why, why should you not get to be zoned? I think that's a really risky, risky move.
If, if we could come up to the microphone so everyone could hear, that would be helpful.
Please come up.
Oh, there's more, yeah. We, okay, yep. So next, anybody else want to come up? And we just, we really want to hear from everyone because, yep.
So I've lived here 30 years.
What's your name?
My name's Joseph Mullins. We don't want city sewer, water, sewage, zoning. We maintain our own roads, wells, septic, drainage. Property taxes are already going up. The taxpayer will be on the hook for all these services that we don't want. It seems like you guys are trying to use this wind initiative or whatever to force obviously unwanted urbanization. That kills the heritage of this region. Coming from somebody who didn't move here but was raised here. And we're not a burden on the city, we're self-reliant. We're watching, we vote, and we organize. And whether it happens tonight, I mean, we know where we stand.
Thank you, sir.
Well, my name is Jay Armstrong and I serve on the Atchison County Farm Bureau Board. And today Wade Meeks, did Wade show up, by the way? Hey, you want to give this? Wade texted me on the way in here that he wasn't feeling well and he may not make it. And so he asked me to give this thing and he texts me his remarks. And so I apologize for reading this, but right over here is our chairman. And so I might say then that on behalf of the Atchison County Farm Bureau, that, which we represent over a thousand that, which we represent over 1,000 voting members in this county. And you have to be a farmer, qualify as a farmer to be a voting member. And it is, zoning has been a, an issue that our organization has opposed for quite some time. In fact, I know a couple of our commissioners will know that one of the things we do in our commissioner races is survey their position. And the first question is always where do they stand on, on zoning? And I might just gently remind Commissioner Noel and Commissioner Quinn that they both stated they were against zoning and, and still are. And to, to the, to the gentleman over here who I agree with. But the way the American process works from the President of the United States on down is that we, we, we decide who we vote for on issues. Maybe it's abortion, whether it's trans genders now that's a big issue, how you're, whether you're a pro-taxer or all those things go into how we decide who we vote for. And when it comes to our county commissioners, zoning is and has been the issue. And so that's how we vote. And if somebody wants to change it, they can run against any of our county commissioners on the platform that they want to zone it, and we'll see how they do. So I think that answers the question about how we handle the, it's probably why it's not in the law, Pat, of how we handle issues like zoning not being an initiatives and referendums issue. So, but by and large, zoning is a planning tool that is used by cities and counties that are growing, that have a problem. And sadly, folks, our county isn't growing. We don't have a problem of a bait shop opening up next to a, a, a car dealership, opening up next to a flower shop. That isn't our problem. And that's what zoning is really about. And what happens is that when you zone and those things aren't issues, they turn political. And when they turn political, the influential and the powerful can usually decide to get what they want and not what is good in the interest of the county. And I'm going to give you an example. I live in the western Edgerton County. Not far, some of my property actually lines up with the Jackson Heights School District in Jackson County, which is zoned. And I have people that are on the school board of Jackson County that will complain to me that they can't get enough money or grow in their school districts because you see the zoning board of Jackson County says, if you want to be a welder or an electrician, or if you want to train dogs, you have to live on a paved road. Now you tell me where economic development comes from. Where does a man or a woman that wants to be better than they are get the chance to do it when zoning gets used for politics? And I could go to Jefferson County and cite you similar kind of things that happen. And so that is what we see in a county when they're not growing but have zoning, that they turn political and who gets on that zoning board. And it's already been stated here that your costs will significantly go up. You'll have to have plans, you'll have to have inspections. And what's more, if you want to repair something, I mean, I talked to some of the home builders and people that have rental properties here in the city of Atchison. You have to be an approved electrician. You have to use them. Farmers are kind of a jack-of-all-trade kind of people. We can do our own plumbing. We can do our own electricity. And you know if we can't, we'll get somebody who can. But by and large, you're taking the abilities of someone who can do for themselves and saying, no, you can't. And so, and the other thing we like to hear about is that zoning has been used for environmental purposes. And, and Casey, I was glad you made the, the comment there and talking to that association of, of planning, that you can pretty much regulate those things out if you so desire, if you so desire. Do you have a performance bond in this county for, for like solar and wind? You see, right there. And I think you ought to talk about that if you want to talk about something you need. Because and I can't, it's in Yates Center, I can't think of the county. It might, it might be Woodson County. I'm not positive on that. But if you have a solar company that comes in, puts those solar panels down and then goes broke, the mortgage company that owns that solar company that's in receivership also owns the leases on the land. And now the farmer or the landowner no longer gets payments for the, for those panels. He also has them on his property and he can't do a thing with them. Because there was no county-wide performance bond that says those will be removed if you don't pay the lease fee. You know what that does to people who want to, if you're a mortgage company that's going to loan money to a solar or wind company and they know they have to have performance bonds? You know how hard money is to get under those structures? You've effectively killed it. And that's how, and in our own county, if you want to build a house and you want to put, you know, septic system in, you have to have a plan. You have to have it approved and it has to be inspected. And it's probably for health reasons, and I have no problem with that. But we aren't zoned and we still have environmentally safe environment. And so the person that told you that is right. You mentioned this rock quarry. I don't know the, the, the particulars on that. But I'll use his name, and he's one mile north of Larkinburg, Kansas, and he's in Atchison County. His name is Bob Hudson. And he's got a lease signed with Ham Quarry to, to, because he's got rock and it's right next to his house. But he'd like to have the money. So, but you know what he found out? He's, he's upset because Ham won't develop it because he learned the hard way that when you take a lease with a company, it gives them not only the right to mine, but it also gives them the right not to mine. And now you see, here's a natural resource in our county that we could be getting taxed with. From what I read in the papers, you guys need some money up here. And I don't know how else you get money than to create economic development. And I will say in closing, and this is my comments. You know, if I decide to move to a city like Atchison or Holton and they're zoned, I will accept their ordinances and how they live and how they choose to govern themselves because I have now moved in and become a member of them. But I guess I have a little problem with the disingenuousness of someone who says, well, I want to move into your space, but I don't want to live by the rules you choose to live. And I want to change them. And you know what? I don't want you building that 100-foot grain leg because it's going to block my view of the morning sun. Welcome to the world of zoning. That's all.
Thank you, sir. I'm not sure if you were, yeah, so we're wind and.
Hi, I'm Clint Corpstein. Everybody knows who I am. Most of you got a target on my back right now. The truth is, I went to the county commission just for what Jay talked about and seeing if there was anything we could do to help my situation. And the answer was, wait a week, we'll see. I asked about environmental issues and stuff like that. Most of y'all seen it. I don't have to say what I said again. And long story short, the answer was no, we cannot help you. And the county has to be zoned. And I said, okay, and I haven't came back. The lease was terminated. It is done with. And if you guys have any questions, I'll talk to you later, but I'm not getting into details on what took place. But there was a lot of stuff that took place in me, and I think everybody in this room was in my shoes. Not everybody, 95% of you would have went to the county and asked if there was something they could do too. I was not pushing anything, and I'm just saying that's the way it went. I went to them. You guys can watch it online. I asked them a question. You guys asked about the rock quarry. I thought the rock quarry was bad for a lot of environmental issues and a lot of things in the neighborhood. And some neighbors have turned on me on this situation too, and it's here nor there. Everybody says everything. But I'm just going to make it clear, the lease was terminated and that is done. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
I just had a couple of questions. Mike Finnegan. A lot of people say they don't like the zoning here in Atchison County because of the freedom of not having the zoning. But then if somebody wants to have that business on their property, but all it takes is the surrounding neighbors to say, no, we don't like that, is that freedom? I don't know if anybody's thought of that. And then on that committee you're talking about, if it was to go to a planning committee, is that elected or appointed? Okay. And then what, if you make resolutions to go around zoning, what does the resolution look like? If you're going to make a resolution to get around the zoning, what's the resolution look like?
Thank you.
I'm Jim Cormode, and of course, I spoke a while ago, but some of you may know that I grew up in Atchison County and then graduated from high school and for 55 years didn't live here. For those 55 years, I lived and worked in four other states and four other countries. Every place I lived was zoned during that time period while I was there. While I lived in Michigan, there's some interesting things I learned about zoning and commissioning planning. I was ministering in Algenack, Michigan. And not far from there, at LaPierre, Michigan, a group of churches wanted to buy 80 acres of land and build a church camp. And the farmer wanted to sell it. And before we got the money together, the township zoned. Now Michigan has different laws than Kansas. They zone by township level. They don't zone by county level. Or they zone by city level or township level. And so not all of LaPierre County was zoning, just Deerfield Township, where we wanted to buy the property. We had to get a zoning variance. They had zoned it for small residential development, the 80 acres of land. We're going to put a church camp. We prepared a presentation with the help of the zoning commissioner, counselor, I mean. When we started to have the meeting, one of the commissioners said, let me speak before they speak. Mr. Chairman, I know it's zoned for small community, for small housing. And if this farmer doesn't sell it to this church camp, he's going to put in all those little houses out there and it's going to put a great demand on our school system and we can't afford that, I move, we rezone it and let the church camp have the property. It was the funniest kind of thing I've ever saw happen in it. I was also on the planning commission in Algenack, Michigan during that time. Let me point out to you some of the things that happened. There was five city commissioners who appointed seven people to a county, to a city planning commission. In all practical effect, the city commission was losing control of what was happening inside the city because the seven non-elected members of the planning commission were controlling what was happening in the city. And they made the decisions about what went here, what went there, what went someplace else. The elected officials got to stand back and watch what was going on and what was done by the non-elected officials. When the city commissioners decided they didn't like the positions that I was taking on the planning commission, they decided to, for all practical purpose, you call it, impeach me. Then they discovered that Michigan law didn't allow them to do that. There was a whole procedure they had to go through, and they almost had to have a hearing like this. And I had enough support that the city commission lost. They couldn't even impeach me from the, from the planning commission where I was. But they were losing control, is my real point. If you go with that, you, you will lose it. Now, planning, zoning is covered proper developments that had happened in Atchison County that weren't on the tax rolls. They discovered enough property that even after they rolled the evaluations back to 1959, they raised the appraisal rate high enough that they raised enough money in one year to pay off the consultants that had done the appraisal work for that time period with what hadn't been discovered from 1950s until 1980. And so it's a handy tool, but it's not a perfect tool, being zoned. I watched a house being built here in Atchison one time. I was working for a licensed electrician. And the building inspector came and said, huh, huh, I think we need a board like that at the other end of this house. He walked off. The architect looked at the carpenter and said, wasn't that a jig pole to start the gable end up there? Yes, sir. Take it down. Building inspector came the next day. That board's missing, just like at the other end. Building inspector said, ah, that's much firmer and much better now. If I told you what year, you'd figure out who the building inspector is, so I better keep my mouth shut. But you see, being zoned doesn't guarantee even quality in what's happening because you end up hiring people that may or may not do things. When I lived in North Carolina, I was in a zoned community and I was renovating a house. I mean, we took the drywall down to the studs and started rewiring the house and everything. Did my own work, Jay. I did it myself. But I went to the city and paid the $20 permit fee for everything I was doing. And about the third permit fee I paid, I said to the inspector, I said, when will you come out and look at it? He said, oh, Cormode, I've looked at your work. I know you. I won't even come out and look at it. I know what you do. So the inspectors don't always, you know, zoning just doesn't guarantee quality, and you need to pay attention to that too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to come up and speak? So I guess it'd be, oh, Leroy.
I'm not noted for public speaking. I'm Leroy Antis. And the zoning aspect, I take to be a very large scope. And I think maybe we need to look at line item by line item on what the considerations would be for zoning and what could be handled as a resolution. And then what may be handled with a zoning code or no zoning at all. And a few case in point I want to throw out. I was on the city planning commission for a few years and I got my eyes open rather quickly. Until I was on that, I had no clue that the city badge and had a chicken ordinance. And that seemed pretty trivial, you know, to me. Why would we even be bothered with that? Well, I came to find out that if you're in an R1 zone, you can be allowed to have eight hens in your yard, no roosters. Well, we know people are in violation of that. When I was doing remodel work to the mushroomic gallery just a couple of blocks from here two years ago, every morning at 7 o'clock, within a block of the courthouse, a rooster crowed. So I'm going to, I'm going to kind of skip around here just a little bit. I've got relatives in Pot County and Walbunsey County. And the vast amount of ground there that has been leased for solar and wind is unbelievable. And it's gone so far that it's virtually irreversible. Now, I live in the county just south of town. Personally, I would not want to see a solar farm around me because I see what it's done to Johnson County. And in the Gardner Edgerton area, those people are going and asking gardener, the farmers, to annex their farms. Because they would have a restriction to keep solar leased. Because they would have a restriction to keep solar leasing from going around. So what they have done coming west of Gardner, they have hopscotched. And Gardner has annexed these farms with a contract with the owner. It will not affect their taxes. Their agricultural tax base will stay as it is. But they will have control over keeping the solar and the wind turbines out. And what they're doing, if your corner of your property mates with another property and they all connect to the city, half of the county may not be within the city jurisdiction. But as long as those corners of those sections intertwined, all of those are under that umbrella. And they are protected with, from solar and, and wind energy. I believe it may have been one of the discussions you put together here a few years ago. We had people from Nema Hall Valley, Nema Hall County. And, and they were talking about some of the issues that they were having in that zone. I've got a friend of mine that lives in Northern Missouri and I'm not trying to turn this into a story time, okay? But he leased one of his quarters, 160 acres to a wind turbine company. They came in and they put the bases in. And he was giving me the size of the base for these towers. And it was a 60-foot diameter silo, 60-foot deep. And he gave me the number of rebar rods, one-inch rods. And I did the calculation for him as to what the cost of that was. They put it in, it malfunctioned. The tower, he had to take it down. But he has a chunk of concrete there that there is no way to disintegrate it, to remove it from his farm. It has no value at all. So what's left behind is a concern. I have concerns for wind and solar industry coming in this county. I'm opposed to it. Just because of what I've seen, it's done to devalue the property adjacent to it. Now, would I embrace and welcome a trailer park or a feedlot or a hog lot right next to me? Absolutely not. Now, I don't think that's gonna happen because thankfully I know my neighbors and I think I'm in a well-protected zone because I don't think that's gonna happen. But for someone coming into the county, if they want to subdivide and develop and put more homes here to generate a tax base that would help share our burden, then I'm sure those people, if they put a half a million or a million dollar home in here, they're not gonna want to have that come in and overtake them as well. So if we can handle some of this with resolutions, I think that's great. I think bottom line, what the majority of the people want here is to preserve what we have. Now, that may take some change. And a lot of us don't want change. I don't want change on this hand, but I'll tell you what, I want some change on this hand. So somehow we need to bring that together and mesh it. Until I was exposed to some of these things, I was totally opposed to zoning. I've got brothers that live in Jefferson County and Douglas County and Johnson County. And I hear the headaches they're going through with some of the zoning. But on the other side, I'm hearing some of the benefits that is keeping, for lack of a better term, some of the riffraff out. So I think rather than squelch this, I think in conjunction with Casey, I think, I think we need to communicate a little bit on this and not just put the thumbscrews to it completely. Because there are some things out there haunting maybe not our generation, but our next generation and the following generations that we need to preserve what we have for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm being, gonna be really brief. My name's Dan Carrigan. I live in here in Atchison County, obviously. Just kind of reiterate what you were saying. I, I agree. I, I'd like to ask a question. Like what counties abutting to us have zoning and which ones do not? Does Leavenworth have zoning? Brown has zoning?
Yes.
Jefferson has?
They just
Just on the, just on the wind.
Okay.
Neither's Nema Hall.
I'm, what I, what I wanna kind of, kind of take off of what he said is, if we don't protect ourself, anybody, any company that wants to come in to this Northeast Kansas territory, Atchison's open for business, right? And there's no regulating. I think everybody's uptight about zoning, you hear zoning, you think it's gonna be a thousand and one rules and regulations. I'm all for targeted zoning, targeted regulations, referendums, whatever it may be, to protect our values of our, of our homes. You talked about building, you know, what you've built and your daughter. I, I just wanna kind of make you think and understand that, you know, you take years and years and years to build up and enjoy the increased value that you have in your land and it could be gone like that. So I am all in favor for, you know, targeted, what, what you may say targeted or referendum or targeted zoning for those specific industries and those large ticket items that can affect our values.
Thank you.
My name's Mike Reyes. I live out in a township, River Road. And not to be negative here, but I appreciate that you brought this to the people because you got a map there already mapped out. I believe that's what you said, you had the, the windmills mapped out already?
So we have a map with leases that were on file that we pulled just to show. And that idea came from Brown County because they had a parcel map like that and they colored in all of the leases so that you can see that there has been, like
So this is a map from Brown County?
No, this is ours.
Okay, but that encouraged you, Brown County, to make this map? I mean, how did this map come about?
We asked for it for information.
Okay, so again, I appreciate that you allowing us to come here to speak because I think you guys already had intentions to do something with that, okay? Not to be negative, but that's my feeling, that's my feeling. I'm not from Atchison, I moved here about 11 years ago. And I saw how the townships handle things with issues. And we spoke before, I don't think you remember me, but I remember the counselor here. And I'm gonna keep this short. But I want to thank you for bringing this to let the people talk because it's the people's vote. I don't think we need a ballot. I don't think it needs to be on the ballot. But you guys brought it. If you didn't bring it to us, I think you would have made the decision. I believe you would have made the decision to go ahead and do whatever the zoning regs. Because that's government control. We know that's gonna come. That'll come down the road. If we were to say yes, we wouldn't have any more control. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah. Oh, sorry. Do, do you want the?
Kind of hard.
So I can, hold on.
Thank you. I, I just want to piggyback on what this gentleman here said in that we, in our, where we live, there's a lot of people from out of state and even companies that are coming in and buying land.
What's your name, man?
Annette Boldridge.
Thank you.
But, but anyway, so there's like, you know, Mike's my neighbor. And we've got, you know, property there that is owned by a mutual fund or something like that. And there really isn't anything to prevent them from coming and putting solar on it. And so I really liked your idea of trying to protect us against certain things. If you could, without, you know, getting too heavy, that's all.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, whoever wants.
I'm Brian Ramirez. I'm an Army veteran of 20 years, been around a lot of different places. No, thank you, it's not necessary. Own two businesses now. And we lived in a lot of different places, had a lot of different amenities in places where we bought houses. And never seen taxes like we see here in Atchison County. Can I get an amen on that? All right, and I think where we live at, we're probably one of the most highest tax places in the nation. And I looked around the country and Kansas is one of those places. And, you know, I think about where we're at here, we pay a lot of taxes and I'm not sure why. And what's that? Yeah, I think everybody's got the same question, right? So, and, and there's probably a lot of different factors that go into that. But I'm thinking, okay, as a business owner, it's gonna come from the taxpayers. We've got to bring business here to the, to the area. And so if we bring business to the area, what does that look like when it comes to zoning? So I just wanted to bring that point up. Are we gonna generate business within our community? Well, to do that, you've got to generate small businesses. You gotta, you gotta have incentives to do that. Or are you gonna bring business to the area? What's gonna incentivize people to want to come to this area? There's a lot of different factors that go into that. So we gotta think just outside of Atchison County. We gotta think about why do people want to come to Atchison County? I guarantee it's not because of the taxes. Okay, so those are just some other factors to think about, so thank you.
Anybody else? Yep.
My name is Henry W. Poole, or some of you may know me as Bill. I sat on both sides of the commissioners, so I know the stuff they're going through. But I don't think common sense and zoning should be on the same piece of paper. I'll give you an example. I live in the far end of the county. I give my boy a farm. He was gonna build a house before the COVID and then everything went through the roof. They was gonna make him pay about $24,000 in permits just to build a house. One of the fees was $5,000 for road access. And I said, what's this for? He's gonna come across my farm into Atchison County, hit the Atchison County road and then come around. He said, we can do it because we're zoned. And I'm 150% against zoning.
Thank you, sir. Bill, you want?
Bill Murphy, and I am a current city commissioner. And we do have zoning in the city. And I've seen, I've seen the pluses and the minuses of, of our zoning in, in the community. And one thing that I've noticed about the way it happens, and this might be universally true about zoning, but you're always gonna pick winners and losers. Because the person who has the idea, and I know we're all worried about the wind and the solar issue. But if some, you're gonna pick a winner, loser, and somebody's gonna say, you can't do that. And you may have this thing planned out for years. And then all of a sudden, you hit a brick wall called zoning. And, but the winners and losers things, I've, I'll just give a real quick example. When I built my store on 17th Street, I went to the planning commission and I asked for a variance. And all I, for, because you have to build so far from the property line, they wouldn't give me the variance, three-foot variance. And Casey's, not to mention my competition, but Casey's comes to town and they come in the exact same variance, except theirs was 18 feet. And they got the variance on the first vote. So, and I asked one of the members of the, I said, why would you, why did you do that? Why did you give them? And they said, just depends who's on the board. And when we, when we function like that, you open a can of worms that you can't resolve. And that's my problem. I've seen the benefits of zoning. I understand why it exists. But it's, it's a very controlling commodity or entity. And it, and it can squelch a, a plan that someone's had. And it might be someone absolutely unrelated to the, the, the development or the building or the whatever. And, and that's my whole point. My problem is we've got governmental people who are appointed, by the way, making, making who, someone a winner, someone's gonna lose. And I just don't think that's the way it's meant to be.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Anybody else want to come up and share their thoughts? So a couple of things I wanted to clarify is this meeting is not, no, I know, no, I'm, I was just gonna say this meeting is not based on one specific example. This meeting is based on what's happening in, in Kansas, in surrounding counties that we see, that we know will be here. And this is just informative to gauge feedback from our constituents and also just educate you on knowing if something affects you, there's nothing the Board of County Commission can do. So, and, and everybody can feel good about that, right? Like one way or another, we just want to make sure that, that we have this conversation and you know. Yes, ma'am.
This is a question. On the internet, I think it was Atchison Chat or something, they mentioned that it would raise taxes if we have zoning. And I don't exactly know how it would raise taxes, our taxes anymore.
I, I'm, don't know about that, but it's possible that it would raise fees. Because usually with zoning, you have permit fees. So I think what little bit I've looked at, it wouldn't be necessarily property taxes, but you would be paying fees for, for that.
I'm Kevin Went. I've been up here about nine years now. And primarily the work that I do, I'm a builder. And most of my work has been in Leavenworth, at City and Leavenworth County. And over the years, watching them change because of zoning, somebody gets a whim and suddenly leave and a half because they're seeing dollar signs, they're selling more building permits, valuations of homes are stupid, they're not even real. No home is, no home that was worth $50,000 20 years ago is worth $500,000 a day. But that's what they're selling for. And that's just, unfortunately, that's how it is. And like And like permits for building a new home in the county. I don't know what the exact numbers are right now. But you have road impact fee, you have. Septic system fee, you have the building permit fee. I mean, you can spend $20,000 before you even get out of the ground. And. You start adding this zoning to this, we're already, you know, with our property that my wife and I own. We're, we're pushing $9,000 a year in property tax. How long before it's gonna be $1,000 a month? To try to stay there. You know, if we decide not to pay the taxes. In three years, it's gonna be on the courthouse steps out here for sale. You know, so we don't ever own it. And we're just gonna add another layer of bureaucracy, another layer of. You know, the thing of it is, if somebody borrows money to build a house. More than likely, the lending company is going to require some kind of inspection. There is no government inspection that's going to be of any, I mean, I've worked with lots of building inspectors. Leavenworth, Lansing, Bonner Springs, Platt City, all over the place. And it's about. The permit, that's all it's about. They, they might be looking for a few items. But. It's not, people that are building a house out here in the county, if they wanna build a piece of, you know, or build a barn. That's their money, they're gonna try to build to the best of their ability. And sometimes things fail, but they fail even with permits. So we're just adding a whole lot of money in taxes, adding the bureaucracy onto it, that's my thoughts.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Kathy and I live in Potter, Kansas, which everybody knows is just a very small, small place. And I have a home there. And I'm on my own, it's just me. And I have remodeled the bottom and I want to redo the top. And with you zoning that, it's gonna cost me three times what I could do on my own. Because I can come in and get my children to help, or I could get help and pay for it myself, or get someone I could pay to do that. But if you're gonna zone it, it's gonna cost me in permits and plumbing and everything else. And if you're single, it's difficult to do that with all that going on. And the people across the street from me have done their own work on their house and it's gonna affect their lives too. It's gonna affect everyone in Potter for you to zone us. And I'm not being ugly about it, it's just a fact of life. That the people that live there do not have major incomes and don't make a lot of money. And for you to zone them and stop them from being able to do what they need to do. It's just gonna be a very difficult place to live. And this grandfather, I don't understand that, because if you're gonna do that, you're gonna have to do most of the houses in Potter. Cause they're not, they don't sell for what you could sell them in Leavenworth. My house is a hundred and some years old, I can't sell it for what it's worth. It's no, if I live somewhere else, I could, but since I live in Potter, it's not worth that. And you're raising my taxes every year. It goes up to 150 every year, I'm paying more taxes. So I am against zoning. It's just not feasible for me to have that, and I just can't do that right now.
Thank you, ma'am.
So let's say we would zone the county. And we rely on these three commissioners to hire a planning commission. Our taxes have to go up to finance those new personnel that have to do that. There's no way we're gonna do it. We can never, ever have enough fees to do it, and if we are, then we're charging way too much for the fees. The second point is, let's say we start out really laser focused with, with what we're gonna zone. We're gonna do solar and we're gonna do wind farms. That's this commission, and we're gonna vote a new commission in. Power corrupts, the next commission comes in and we're gonna do solar, we're gonna do wind, and we're gonna do the farmer's pond. And then the next year, we're gonna do the farmer's driveway. And suddenly this target that was a laser focused deal when we first started with this commission. Is now so large that it won't even fit on the target. When does that end? If you never start down that road, you never have to worry about what the final product's gonna be.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Right, so I guess the takeaways is knowing who your county commissioners are. And knowing that they have the ability to. Enact a planning commission and zoning. I think these type of events for topics such as this are very important. Um, to be able to hear from the people as a body, right? Because that's another challenge as being one of three commissioners. And the way our districts are set up, Eric and I have a really good rural population in our district. Mr. Campbell does not, and he is very much involved in all of Atchison County and loves to hear from, from everyone. So people outside of his district too. Sorry, I'm not speaking for you, I just want them to know like, the, the way it's set up, so. I think. It's important.
Yeah, it's. As much as I am a no vote. As a commissioner, you have to be prepared to listen to arguments that you don't like. Or maybe you don't wanna see things go there. And you have to learn from them. And I'm, I'm foremost against zoning. But there are circumstances that come up that make you pause and question things. I found myself early in my uh, commission career, I think it was in 2017. When Leavenworth County rejected the Tyson plant. And there was a, an effort by some in our county to attract them to our county. That was my first foray into looking into investigating what zoning possibly, if we would need it. Because there, the scope of that was bigger than anything we've talked about tonight. We're talking about uh, the, the manure from the, the, they had 150 growhouses in the, in the county that they were wanting to put up. Or in the area, not all in the county. There was water issues, there was road issues. And so uh, of course, I didn't go through. But. As much as I am a no, there are things that could possibly come down the pike. That will, we want protection from. That's, that's kinda where my reason for agreeing to a, a meeting is to hear from you. Because uh, nine to one, people have told me they don't want zoning. But you have to think about maybe the worst case scenario too. And as a commissioner, you wanna be responsible to everybody. And so you need to listen to all of the arguments and weigh. What your, your constituents want and, and if there's a problem, educate. And, and so I, I don't wanna look like I'm, I'm not on the fence, cause I know where I'm at today. But you know, there are maybe some things that we haven't even thought of down the road, that's a possibility. And by at least knowing the process, we would be in a better, if we're gonna wait until the time to regulate them. We know the process, we know what we'd, we'd, we, excuse me, what we would need to do. To put things in place maybe at that time. I, my friend Bill was a commissioner at the time, he's quite aware of the, what the, the Tyson thing, that was a very big in scope. It's, at the time, there was 1,500 migrant families were projected to come to the area. So. That's big. And uh, so I don't wanna be seen as on the fence, but it's just food for thought. That I think, I, I had a couple of questions, it's like, why do you even wanna have this meeting? It's like, well. I know where I'm at, but, and I think I know where the majority in my district are. But. It's not proof, you know, it's not scientific. And I think it's, uh, we need to have discussions like this to see in the future where even maybe future commissioners will wanna go. So.
I, I'm new to all this, but the thing is, like Casey says, we're here for education. But for all I've heard is, why not? I know what I said, I don't want a windmill in my backyard. I don't want all that stuff happening. But if it's education, and I don't wanna call anybody out. But why aren't we here to come to yeses? Like, give me a reason why we want. I mean, I'm not standing before it, but I mean, to educate us. You put the other side of it. I mean, that's all I would do, I'm, I'm new to it. So if I'm gonna vote no, I wanna know why, if I'm gonna vote yes. Give me a reason to vote yes. So is there anybody here, and I'm not gonna call you out, but is there anybody here that's gonna vote yes? Give me the education on the yes piece, that's on.
As a mitigation to that thought. Is there any reason why resolution, forgive me, I'm inexperienced in this, but is there any reason why everyone could handle this in whatever scope? Any risks that could come with this?
Well, I think that the one issue that really spurred the current. Interest or it was the, the quarry. That we were told the quarry would only could be stopped through a zoning uh, ordinance. Now, that's not off, on the table anymore, the way it sounds. So I, and I'm sorry if, if there's any. Um, thing Clint that. You know, you came to us and wanted help, that's the only thing that we've had an answer. And. But then on the other hand, when you know that the constituents won't support that, or you, you feel that. That's the evidence that we have, so you know, I. As a commissioner, you, you wanna help your constituents, but you're, ultimately your, your answer to all of them, so.
And the reason for it, but. What exactly would be the reason why uh, a, a quarry or whether the chicken plant would be, you know, factored into that? Couldn't be handled by resolution, that was my reason.
Well. Pat, do you, can you?
Yeah, I, I mean. We, we have a set of statutes that the legislature has adopted that have given a clear path on. How to, how to do land use regulation, and it's found in the zoning statutes. Are there ways to address other specific issues that might come along? Yes, there, there are. Uh, but there isn't really a, a, a clear path for having a countywide study done of what issues are of concern to people. And some of the issues, like a quarry. There isn't really a way to address that through a simple resolution. I mean, I, I suppose you, you could ask any specific issue and, and drill down and there might be something that could be done in regulation that would be. Short of the, the zoning scheme that's been set out by statute. And, and in fact, the Kansas Supreme Court has uh, has said that zoning regulations don't have to follow exactly the statutes that are set out. But we do know that the formulation that's set out in the statutes will pass and does. Grant due process to landowners who feel that they may be aggrieved by government overreach, so. So I, I think that's, that's the only reason, but if there are specific issues that are of concern. They might be able to be dealt with through a single resolution. But, but there, but there, there might literally be thousands of those issues and. Yeah, that's all.
Play some more for you, give them time, so we can investigate further.
Well.
Doesn't have to happen now, but can you put a pause on any leases or anything like that while we investigate?
If, if you're talking about leases involving solar or wind or even quarries, yes. But part of that process of having the moratorium is to say, we are, we as a county would be considering. Imposing some land use regulation and demanding time. To complete that study. And you know, what I'm hearing is that there isn't a ground swell of support for engaging in that process of doing the study. But doing the moratorium, part of that moratorium is the uh, the promise, at least the implied promise. And it's explicitly laid out in every moratoria that I've ever seen. That the county intends to engage in the process of doing uh, the comprehensive plan that is part of the zoning process.
And is the map something that's gonna be published? Cause I, I think there might be a couple terms to promote some guesses if they know there's a lease next door to them.
Yeah, I mean, it's. It's not on the county website as far as I know, but I don't think there's, there's nothing secretive about it.
And at the same hand, there could be a couple things for the yes to no, if we have a better line of communication. Opened up where we could tell you that we don't want something or that we do.
How would you folks feel about a survey? If we?
I'm 32 years, well, 34 years old now. We live out there because we wanna be left alone and we don't wanna be vacant. I mean, if I wanna put up a treehouse for my kids, my girlfriend has three kids, if I wanna build a treehouse. I don't wanna have to go say, hey, I want. And have to fill this out and pay a fee so I can build something in a tree that I already have. I mean, if somebody hits my mailbox and we gotta move my mailbox, I don't wanna have to put a permit up. I mean, we farm, we run a business. We've got all other aspects of life to deal with, we're just adding more to our lives. We don't wanna deal with, we just wanna be left alone, that's all we want.
Thank you, sir.
Couldn't hear you, but so the next, anybody that wants to speak, go bring a microphone to you.
What encouraged Brown County, Brown County went to it, what encouraged them?
Their community came to their commissioners.
I mean, what, anything in particular, what business or what?
Wind, like commercial wind energy.
What about Jefferson County?
Everybody else, those, these are some of the questions I have, as when we're asked to help. We can't without zoning. But when we want to set rules, whether it's resolutions for nuisances or different things, we have the ability to do that. And so it's just really hard to comprehend how historically, in order for you to clean up. The junk on your property, we set a resolution and we can enforce that, but we can't. And, and also our road, roadway and street design guidelines that were adopted last February. You know, we can set rules that no road, street or storm drainage may be constructed in unincorporated Atchison County without prior written approval from road and bridge. We can set those rules, but we can't protect our roads against companies coming in or having any type of. And, and to me, those are the questions that don't add up in my mind, and I'm trying to understand. No, we're not zoned. There's, there's already rules and regulations in place from, from years past. That give enforcement, and so that's the disconnect for me of, if we wanna protect our roads. How do we not have the ability when we can tell our constituents what they can and can't do? I don't know, it just doesn't.
I'll just stand up and speak louder. I, they, they'll be able to hear me. It seems a little bit like that's just an excuse. I'm, I'm just going to be very clear with it. It doesn't seem like that warrants a whole zoning. Honestly, I mean, we, we're the problem with our roads half the time. We get the tractor and we fix it ourselves. If, if you need help, we would have that.
No, I, I, I'd like to introduce myself. Uh, I'm, I'm the District One Commissioner, James Campbell. Uh, I appreciate all of you here. This is, uh, it's a great forum. I, I, I love seeing all the faces from Atchison County. She touched on the reason that this came about, and most recently. And, uh, we were simply trying to help, uh, a person that came to us and needed help. And looking at that, we realized that some of these bigger issues that, uh, folks have brought up, wind, solar, and it is an issue. Uh, I have been to, uh, seminars with, uh, commissioners from around the, the state, from across the state, and it is an issue. Now, when it's going to come, I don't know. I have no idea. If we can solve it, um, with a, a, a bond issue or a resolution, uh, I'm all for that. I'm all for doing it and targeting the, the specific thing that we're concerned about. But I haven't heard any folks, I haven't heard a lot of folks talk about, are they concerned with a three hundred foot, you know, uh, wind generator, a whole farm of those things and the platforms and the impact that would have? I haven't heard that. What I would like to know is if we sent out a survey covering some of those things, would you all appreciate getting a survey and get it back to us so that we know exactly how you feel about some of those things? Cause that's, that's my concern. I don't want to control what you do, but there are a handful of things that we've heard today and that I have heard outside of this room from other commissioners that concern me about, you know, folks coming in and, uh, you know, they get, they sign a lease and the next thing you know, your neighbor who's got a little bit of land has signed this lease, uh, for something to be built that you don't want. Now, the point, your point back there, do we need to enact zoning just to control a couple of things? If we don't, we won't do it. Trust me. We, we won't do it. If we, okay. Well, if it, if it's just a resolution, then it's, it's, there's no, there's no cost to it. Or if it's, yeah, yeah, you're saying if we enact zoning, is that what you're saying? Right. And I'm agreeing with you if, if we can find a way, you know, outside of zoning, if we can find a way to do it. And, and I think, I think that's what I'm hearing, that you don't want zoning, but there are some folks out there that we need protection from. And if we can do it in a, in a targeted, limited way, that's what you're, that's what you're asking for. Okay.
Hi, good evening. I'm Billy and, uh, I feel sorry for Clint and all his sleepless nights. But I think he is kind of like the canary in the coal mine. He's our warning shot. I love the freedom that we have in the county. I also want to be protected from something like that or from Tyson or from the, they, the air turbines do, or the wind turbines do a tremendous. And once they're, they outlive their usefulness, usually that's about twenty years, they just walk away. They leave you to, to clean up the mess. So, yes, I love the, uh, freedom that we have. But I think Clint's situation and the Tyson situation is our warning shot that, like going to the, your doctor every year or so for preventive medicine to get things taken care of before they do become a problem, I think we need to think about that. Thank you, Billy.
Yeah. I was on electric board for over twenty-five years. I've been to all the windmill meetings in the state of Kansas. You don't have to worry about the windmills because there's so much maintenance, they're wore out before they're ever paid off. But they can walk away and leave you a mess. But I don't foresee anybody wanting to come and put a windmill farm in Atchison County.
Thank you.
With what you just said, with the, I believe it's a Soldier Wind Farm, Soldier Creek Wind Farm up in Seneca. It feeds Leavenworth County. It comes across Seneca, down through Jackson County, Atchison County, Jefferson County, and into Leavenworth County, as far as I know. And the amount, I don't know what you, what Atchison County had for road damage, but I do know the path that I take every day going to Leavenworth. I was underneath, you know, I cross under the power line multiple times on the way to Leavenworth, the way the line jigjags. And Rogers Road, before it gets, right before it gets into Leavenworth County. I mean, it's a, it's a, just a chip and seal road. It was destroyed and it's back in good condition now. Whether or not the electric corporation, you know, the, the power, you know, whoever put the power line in was responsible for the rebuild. But there is a lot of impact that is involved in, you know, especially like a wind farm, which I mean, like I say, the, the wind farm more than likely is not going to come to Atchison County. But that is huge, huge equipment that is, that they come in with. Even these, the wind farm, the wind farm that the power lines that they put up, the equipment, you know, these, these poles are a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty foot tall, concrete poles. They're, there's massive equipment and they're destroying lots of farm ground. They're destroying lots of roads. And, you know, of course, people are getting lease money off of it. But there is a lot of impact from it. And, uh, this, that was just to my point to what you were saying there with the wind, even though we don't, aren't necessarily with the wind.
Hello, my name's, uh, Richard Burge. What I'd like to say is if you're going to have a forum like this in the future, please do so, so that it's more user friendly to the taxpayers here in Atchison and Atchison County. There have been just as many people standing out here in the foyer, all the way down the steps. They can't hear a single part of this discussion. So we're put on the outside, although we, a lot of us have tried to worm our way in here. And a lot of them have left because they weren't going to get a voice anyway. So I believe that a survey may be a good idea to send out. So those that didn't have the opportunity to hear what has already been discussed or being able to discuss some of their own concerns may be able to fill out that survey and at least be heard.
Sir, may I ask you a question? If we were to send out the survey, do you have a suggestion on how to make sure everyone can get it? Because we are learning, um, as we go with these forums. Uh, we had a County Lake Forum, um, after we had already advertised for this one. And the County Lake Forum was in the commission room in the basement. And we immediately realized from that one that it was going to be larger. And so we asked for access up here. Our fear of changing the location, which we learned tonight when Commissioner Noel went downstairs, there were people sitting in the commission room, even though we're in the same building and we just came upstairs. We were afraid if we switched it to Memorial Hall, that people would show up here and not have that message and they would miss it. So I wholeheartedly hear you and we will do better of maybe trying to gauge attendance at RSVP type deal or something. Because we know that we're kind of the space, we hear you. But I just wanted to explain the take of why, why we're still in the courthouse. And it's because we already advertised and we didn't want anyone to show up and not. And so that's another struggle we're hearing is we're not getting information out to the public well. So how can we do better at that? So if we do a survey, um, how do we, how do we get the survey out to ensure it hits every person that is here, has been here or, or cares? Cause we, we definitely want everyone's voice to be heard.
We'll, we'll mail it. We'll mail it out.
With everybody in the county, every county?
Sixteen thousand.
And another thing I think it's interesting to share is we also receive feedback on our emails. So commissioners@coks.org, um, and we have received, um, feedback on both sides of the issue. Try to encourage, you know, we want to hear both sides here, but. I mean, it's really easy for me. We're not zoned and we have rules and we're, we're telling people what to do already without being zoned. So I just needed to hear from the public that, I mean, I had a good gauge where my constituents stand, but as a body, we need to hear that. As a community, we need to hear that. And real quick, speaking of community, uh, people keep utilizing, uh, you know, singling out the individual with a quarry. But I'll tell you, we have a dozen emails from the neighborhood. It was the neighborhood that was concerned about what was coming in, not one person's problem. So I feel like that's important to clarify as well.
Wait, you're not, sorry, can't hear you.
But with that, I just really want to say, because it's really kind of just upsetting, shame on them. Because we had a young man that wanted to open a business in his livelihood and we've shut it down. So shame on them.
I thought he canceled the lease.
He got it, he got it canceled. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Emily. I'm Clint's hus- Clint's husband. Clint is my husband, sorry. So I'm just going to clarify kind of what went on with that very briefly, because I can't talk too much about it. That piece of property was inherited here recently. The previous owner passed away a couple of months ago. We inherited it and had no idea about this contract whatsoever. We were notified that we had forty-five days to pretty much leave the property because the lease says they now own the property. So just like we're all here educating ourselves on what this zoning looks like, Clint went to the county commission meeting and said, what can be done? The other lawyers were not talking to us. We had no idea. They said, here's your contract. We're coming in in forty-five days. So that's what Clint did. He went to the county commission and said, are there anything to stop this? He was not looking for zoning and that's where this went. We have stopped the contract. I can't get into how that happened, but the contract's done for the quarry. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. Um, and I can verify that is for sure. So we don't, when someone comes to us and the topic goes, uh, is presented to us and we have to investigate how we're going to deal with it. And we, uh, have our counselor and, and the remedy was through zoning. So that doesn't make, uh, him for asking a question shouldn't be any blame whatsoever. He done absolutely what anybody in this room would do, uh, when they are faced with a new situation. They just had no idea, there's a timeline. There's everything from probably crops involved on the ground to, you know, do we plant, do we not? So there is absolutely no fault with, with that sparking a debate that is much bigger than what that one topic is. They, we can't use, we have to use zoning to stop a quarry because that is a land use. But there are things that we can apparently do. Uh, I think one of them is, uh, I'm on the NEKS Board, which is the Environmental Services. That is by resolution that we can, uh, regulate your septic systems, inspect and ser- and that's not a land use requirement. That is, uh, through KDHE, it's a health environment, uh, thing. So that can be regulated through resolution. No, there's, there's, it, no, the, the quarry is only, the quarry is only stoppable through zoning. That, because that, you asked about resolutions also. Resolutions stop some things, but that's not a land use, uh, regulation. The quarry is. So there's, there's different things and statute dictates, uh, Kansas state statute dictates what is land use and what, the process you need to go through. If we would impose or, uh, appoint a, uh, planning commission and there's already guidelines on how many people should be on it. They need to be spread from different, diverse, uh, areas of the county. It would take a, probably a year for them to, uh, come up with findings. They're supposed to be tasked with investigating all kinds of zoning, all types of zoning. Then they would come to the commission and present their findings and recommendations. Even if the county only ever had a targeted, one thing targeted to present that they want, were interested in, we have to go through the whole thing because it's dictated by state statutes that we go through that. That's also a seventy-five thousand dollar approximate, uh, cost to, to have the planning commission and, uh, to get the, the study done. Well, we can, if we just don't, if, if it's no, and we just won't have zoning, but there are things that possibly could pop up that would be a similar situation to what Clint faced. Things that if, if there's not rules there, it, things like that could happen again. So you're not just going to not have zoning and have a way of taking care of all of these things. There could be problems and things could pop up.
So I, I just want to say, so we, we did what we could to help this young man. It was too late. I would do the same for any one of you. Just so you know, if you came to us, you were a, a member of our county and you needed our assistance or you thought that maybe we could assist you, I would do the same thing for any one of you. I, I'm not biased in any way because of where I'm at, my district. I am for everybody in this county. And this was something that we honestly looked at and said, can we help this young man? He's been put in a really, uh, tough position and that's where this came from. So if, if it doesn't happen, if zoning doesn't happen, uh, I still think that something good will come out of this meeting. I honestly believe that because, uh, we've had some folks bring up some really good points. I don't think most of us are aware of the impact of some of the things that have come up tonight. I, I, and, and I think, uh, we can help you become more aware of those things. And then I, I think a survey would help because I want to gauge, uh, your opinion on some of these issues. Wind farms, solar farms, and maybe educate some folks on the way, along the way. So if we can, if we can do those things, find out information, get it back to us, that'll be helpful for the, the entire county. But thank you.
As commissioners, look into what you can do to stop wind farms, green energy. Is there a blanket resolution?
That's what, that's what I'm talking about.
And that way.
Yeah.
We can avoid that scary word that obviously triggers so many emotions and fear, the zoning word. And let's see what we can do without that.
Yep.
So my understanding from talking to Brown County is a resolution doesn't hold up. So just so you know, when it comes to wind, commercial wind energy, that was the feedback that I got from Brown County, who's lived it, breathed it, educated themselves for over four years. So, and then just to piggyback on Eric, uh, on the sanitation side of things, Atchison County does have environmental and sanitation codes. They were written, uh, September twenty-eighth of ninety-eight. The codes were adopted under the authority of the Board of County Commission, um, based on statute. And there was a committee that met in twenty-twenty-one, um, in July of twenty-twenty-one. And then a few of them met again to determine what the rules and regs are for sanitation code. So it's the same type of thing that's relevant to what you guys are talking about, not elected people, committee. it's the same type of thing that's relevant to what you guys are talking about, not elected people committees putting together, bringing recommendations. And currently, the proposed two and a half acre minimum, to your point, sir, that's what's in the sanitation codes that, that I pulled before this, because I thought that was relevant too. And it has been in conversation. So thank you for that.
Anything that's land use, so the towers would need zoning. Quarries, anything that's regulating land use would need it. I, I don't know. I'll find out.
I'm wondering about the operation of windmill farms. Can that be handled by resolution? I mean, to say yes or no on this location is land use. But could you, I mean, windmills were out. You got 26 tons of concrete sitting underneath that windmill, and with as much water table issues as we have in Atchison County, I think that would be disruptive to a lot of Atchison County. All the springs would probably dry up. But that's a land use issue. But so they're built. Can you then regulate what's gonna happen? How often do they have to have the brakes replaced so that they stay safe? What happens if they go bankrupt? Is there a trust fund that's gonna remove the 26 tons of concrete out of the ground when it's gone? How about solar? Colorado is building solar farms in an interesting pattern. They're putting the panels 20 feet off the ground, so you can still drive underneath of them. And they're spreading them out, what the industry says, every row, they're putting them every other row, and now there's truck gardening going on. Zoning to say yes or no, it's gonna be there, but can you regulate how it's maintained and how it's functioning by resolution? Pat, you ought to look into that for us.
So can you overregulate, overregulate to make it, make it impossible or not, not feasible for folks to come in, right? So you have weekly inspections on your windmill, or you have fees associated with a quarry that are, that make them, you know, not feasible.
I think that's the biggest fear of a lot of the people that are know that things are gonna be overregulated. I know we're, I'm not, yeah, but I,
To me, it sounds like zoning is all it is.
Okay, they don't do anything.
Did I hear my name?
Well, Brown, Brown, Brown County, Brown County just enacted zoning specifically for wind.
Commercial.
Commercial wind farms. So they did that.
Terry Hanky, Musketa Grass Opera Township, I hope that commissioners follow up with their survey and not just talk, political talk that is. And I can't understand, if we're gonna send a survey out for our opinion, why can't we hold our hand up? You know, vote. And then closing, I'd like to, I think Clint's done the county a big service, and it was really an awkward situation, but the fact that this has happened, or else you all wouldn't be here and we wouldn't be a lot smarter. So thank you, Clint.
I guess one other thing that's kinda bugging me is the thought that having a town hall meeting to bring people to speak to their elected officials is stirring the hornet's nest. I want this to be a place where you're valuing the fact that you have elected people that want to hear what the people have to say. And I mean, as an elected official, I value everyone's opinion, and I strive really hard to reach out to everyone to get where they stand on issues. And when you have an issue as big as the word zoning, we want to ensure that everybody in the county is aware and has a voice. And so I'm glad that that survey, you know, we'll just figure out a way to get it mailed and come back. If there's any input on what you want in the survey outside of just yes, no, unsure, because we do have that sheet. If anyone didn't want to speak and wants the markdown, that was a recommendation from someone, so.
Okay, so you know, this, this goes back to the meeting last fall, I believe, in regards to the property tax. We were downstairs, and there was only, I mean, it was a full room, but that's a small room. It definitely wasn't all of these people. With the way the property tax increase was for our area, we went up, what'd you say, 15% or so? Is that being done sporadically, this 15 and this 15, and then, you know, or is the county at large, all at once, being increased? Is the property tax, whatever, being increased on everybody at the same time? The reason I'm asking that is it's hard to have a voice against the increase in taxes when our little group was the only group that was there, and now there's another little group for the next group of people, and I know that it doesn't have anything to do with tonight's meeting. You were just saying, though, about you don't want this to be a hornet's nest, you want it to be a meeting. And we felt kinda, it's like, you know, this seems kinda underhanded here, because obviously all of these people and more, when it comes to property tax, would have been, it would have filled Memorial Hall, it would have filled Bartle Hall. You know, it would have filled everything, everybody in Atchison County, you know, would be there if, if everybody would have had the same notice at the same time saying, hey, wait, let's put the brakes on here. Yes, there are a lot of wants, but we're also in survival mode, you know? We're all just trying, you know, so.
I, I, I'd like to speak to that. So one of our agenda items on Tuesday's, at Tuesday's meeting was communication. So we're, we're trying hard to communicate. Anytime we have something to put out, not just meeting minutes, but anything that's important, that we know that's important to the folks in the county, we are working hard to figure out how to get it out to, to people. I mean, short of sending a mailer out every time we have information, which is not, is not economically feasible, we are using every avenue we have, and you're, that, that is on our radar for sure. Getting word out to people. And if, and if, and if it takes a, a town hall meeting every six months, whatever it is, to get you folks in here, we'll do it. So.
And especially when it comes to property taxes and the budget, I think it's very important that everybody pays attention, because we aren't even levying the taxes it takes to have the services at this point. And so absolutely, and, and we're already hearing that, right, from the funding of, of Meals on Wheels for the elderly, or Memorial Hall, or, you know, some of the, the cuts that had happened, we, we are already seeing some of, of that this year. And so being able to show you guys, everybody, what you're paying for is important, and then prioritizing, right? Because if something goes away that's a vital community need, you gotta weigh that. So, yes, sir.
I just wanted to answer toward your question about the property tax. Robert Gaskell from Byhorden. I met with the appraiser, I don't know how many other folks here did that after we got our tax bill. It averaged 10% or a little over that past three years, I think. And so she gave me, you know, the answer about, there's a formula. There's sales, you know, it's based on sales in your area, and I'm not sure about whatever else, that's the main thing she talked about. And so, and she used the L word, she dropped that on me, it's, it's done according to state law. So that's, you know, basically their only response is that they're just following the law. And so I, I feel troubled by what's been going on in property tax.
Well, just to give you a little heads up, we're going through the budget process now. But we're not to the end, but last year, we utilized over $800,000 of cash to get where we were, and that's not there this year. And there were other things cut that need to be put back in the budget based on the community needs, such as different things. So it is going to be important for the community to pay attention, to dial in and to understand what it takes financially to run, and then if we need to make cuts on services, you know, everybody will know what, what that looks like. So. All right, well, if anybody doesn't have anything else, just wanted to tell everyone, thank you for coming. We truly do appreciate this platform. We appreciate you guys coming. We're always welcome to feedback on how we can be better. The email address is commissioners@coks.org, comes to all three of us, so that we know we're all getting the same input from you. Anything else?
No, no, just in closing, like I said before, we are trying to do the best we can for you folks, and we hear you. Okay, we have heard you, and I, I, I want to get a survey out to you folks. And I, I think it needs to be somewhat comprehensive, so that we gauge how you all feel about issues. But I'm concerned about folks coming in here that we don't want. That's my concern, and we've heard some of this tonight and some examples, but I am here to help you. I'm here to serve you. So thank you. Yep. Thank you. Have a safe trip home.
Yeah, sorry, I don't think about doing here.
So move. Second.
Move seconds.